Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 30, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you. All right. Could we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Allen. Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
President Fox.
Here. Now it's time for the pledge of allegiance. Could I have Chief Evers and Deputy Chief as well come up, join us, lead us?
..................
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed sessions and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised, the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to minutes for approval. Do I have a motion to approve the regular and closed session minutes, meeting minutes from July 5?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we're moving on to reports. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. A few comments. The Summit Police Department is hosting a citywide bicycle safety program that will run until the end of August. The program is sponsored by Summit Downtown, Inc., to encourage children to practice bicycle safety. Summit Police Officers will distribute $5 gift cards to children they observe demonstrating proper bicycle safety techniques, such as wearing helmets, using hand signals, and obeying traffic signals. National Night Out is on Tuesday, August 2, on the Village Green. Beginning at 6:00 PM, Summit will join thousands of communities around the United States to celebrate National Night Out, a community-building event that takes place annually on the first Tuesday of August. Featuring a variety of state, federal, and municipal-level agencies, National Night Out provides a chance for community members to come together with law enforcement individuals. And additionally, I wanted to say that this is the second week of the Summit Police Department Youth Academy. They had 30 children last week, middle schoolers, and 30 this week. My office is right up there. I can hear them down here, learning what they need to do, learning to pivot, learning to march. And also, they go to the police academy, they do a whole exercise where they, there's a crime, and then they, gosh, I just aged myself by doing the air quotes, sorry. There's a crime that they solve. It's a really great experience for these children, and last Friday was the graduation for the first class, and Greg and Lisa Allen were there, and this coming Friday is the graduation for the second class. So it's always a great experience. We didn't have it for the couple of years during COVID, so the kids are really back and excited about it. So it's, you know, 60 kids who are willing to spend a week, from eight to three, I think it is, learning how to understand police work, and they have great role models in these officers, so we're really fortunate. And then lastly, I just wanted to address my thoughts and feelings about what's been going on for the last several months regarding Broad Street West. The last several months have been very difficult for me, and I believe for all of you, my colleagues on council, and members of city staff. Five years ago, we started the Broad Street West redevelopment project with the highest hopes and best intentions, to enhance the downtown and improve the fiscal health of our city. Unfortunately, for several reasons, the project has become a source of division in our community. I am truly heartsick about that. Please believe me when I tell you that everyone on this dais wants what is best for Summit. And while it is unlikely that everyone will agree, we surely need a consensus. I am very sorry that some residents do not believe that we are motivated by doing good. We tried, but clearly, we did not communicate our intentions effectively. But that was then, and this is now. Council and I have heard you, we have paused, and intend to fully engage the community in our reset of this endeavor. We will be thinking, planning, and working this summer, but not deciding. Again, we have heard you, and we will not act in August. We have a redevelopment plan, and we will use that plan to guide our decisions with community input going forward. We will work hard to listen to all of our residents, and I truly hope our residents will continue to listen to us. So enjoy the rest of the summer, and I hope to see everyone around town in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers for the city administrators' report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate this opportunity to update the community on Broad Street West redevelopment and what we've been focusing on over the past month, and will look to complete in the coming months. At my request, city staff completed, makes sense, a review of comments made during every public meeting since February 2022, which included comments sent by emails, while, to guide the city in future project planning with the redevelopers. Members of my office and the steering committee have met with the redevelopers, L&amp;M and Toll Brothers, to discuss community concerns expressed over the last several months, restate city priorities, and to direct them on providing the city with revised concept plans for the redevelopment area. In Sub District 3, we have asked for a project plan that proposes a much smaller building or buildings with fewer residential units that support the goals outlined in the master plan. Further, we have reemphasized our need for affordable housing and onsite parking that comports with the redevelopment plan. Council will communicate clearly with the community about next steps in the coming days and weeks. There will soon be updates provided on the city website and a mailer with updated information that outline next steps pertaining the redevelopment area. Future action items will include forming a working group that consists of professionals from the community with expertise in commercial real estate and finance to assist the city in project negotiations, engaging city advisory committees in the planning process to provide input, and hosting additional public meetings in the fall. As the city's chief administrative officer, council and the mayor have made it clear to me that they understand the unique opportunity presented by redevelopment of Broad Street West, and that we will continue to progress with it purposefully and with meaningful community engagement. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I had just one item. The Summit Environmental Commission is asking for volunteers to help with weeding at the Tiny Forest this Saturday, July 30, starting at 8:00 AM. Volunteers should bring a drink and gardening gloves. You can park at the community center on that 100 Morris Avenue and walk down Morris Court to reach the Tiny Forest on the left across from the grassy meadow. Community service hours are available, and you're also free to show up after 8:00 AM. I think the goal was just 8:00 AM because it's cooler then. So it's a great project. It's something that's really unique. We're one of the few communities in this country who's doing this, and I urge you to get involved with this project. Councilmember O'Sullivan has done some work there. I have as well, and it's a lot of fun. So with that, we'll move on. We have a firehouse project update from Chief Evers and Deputy Chief Embimbo as well? Yes, okay.
All right, Madam Mayor, thank you for giving the opportunity tonight to give a progress report. We're going to talk about, quickly about the budget, where we stand, and then what's been completed and next step forward. But before we do that, I've been getting a lot of questions on the street about what the building looks like, what's in the building, so if you enjoyed me for a few minutes, I'm going to do a quick little recap on some of the features of the building, design, what's inside the building, then we'll move on to the updates. So real quick, we know the site is on Broad Street in between Slant O'Dwyane and the Tier Parking Garage. You can look at, the site will have two points of egress and entry, one closer to Slant O'Dwyane, another one down by the parking garage for apparatus to exit and enter the building, and it'll be another little area where overflow parking will come up, we'll have another entrance onto Broad Street. So if you're on Broad Street, going into town, this would be the view you would see on the corner of the building, and we're going to have our bell monument displayed nicely there on the corner. Also, the first floor is going to have our fire prevention education room. There'll be some artifacts in there as well, and then the second floor is the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, also our training room. This is the view if you were looking from Slant O'Dwyane Apparatus Bays. One of the good features we found with this fire is that when we enter and exit the building, we will not be marring traffic on Broad Street. We're going to come off Broad Street, and all moving will be off the traffic on our own property, so a lot safer for us, a lot safer for pedestrians, a lot easier to maneuver on the property. And this would be the view if you are coming down Broad Street, the Tier Parking Garage, this is the view you would see. Again, the bays, it's designed as a drive-through firehouse, you can come on both ways of it. And over to the left over here is our traditional hose tower, and lots of, a lot of training property would have built in the hose tower, so you could do some bailout training, rappelling off the side of the building. All right, so real quick, this is the first floor, so if you would walk into the firehouse from Broad Street, walk into a best of view, over to right is going to be our fire prevention education room. Everything in this gray area here is considered operational space. One key feature of this building is that it really keeps all the contaminants away from the rest of the building. Different filtration systems, different vent systems, everything's kind of encapsulated in that one space. So this is where all the fire trucks would be. When guys come back from a fire or a call, they would walk into a decon area here, they can take all their gear off, they can wash it, if need be, they can take showers, get all their stuff off them, and then this part around here is their locker space where all their turnout gear will be stored, separate from everything else. On this side here is a similar kind of decon for our EMS, because a lot of EMS calls, you can bring back backboards, equipment, you can wash them off, and they're safely stored from everything else in the building. This side along the track, really the support areas, the hose tower, there's a part for our equipment, utility rooms, things of that nature. This is the mezzanine level. The building has mezzanines on it. One of our big goals is to incorporate a lot of training into this building, so we can keep firemen in town, on duty, do a lot of training, and also, we do a lot of search services with Melbourne and Springfield, opportunities down the road, have them come in and do a lot of training on site for us. And it'll also be some storage on this side as well. This is the top floor. This is pretty much our admin offices. The corner over here is our EOC/training room. We have a dual-purpose room. We do training and also at accident and emergency operations center for the city, conference rooms, district local staff rooms in here. This is going to be our day room, where firemen, we gather there, little outside training, a platform on the exterior, there's a weight room, exercise room, and these are all the dormitories, living space, and locker rooms on this part of the building. So that's real quick, I was going to go back, real quick, budget-wise, where we stand right now, our total project budget was $50.686,550. That budget has three separate components. One of them is the actual bid amount that was awarded to Brahma, through the contingency cost you put into that for any unknown costs, and then there was the balance for the architects, remaining balance for the architects, and that came to the $50.686,550. So at the date, we've spent $1,755,642 payments to the contractor. There hasn't been any net change orders at all to the building to date. We did dip into some contingency money. Our budget for that is $16,400. We spent $15,049 for some, we had to get right-of-way insurance for the railroad coming up, so we did have to dip in that a little bit. Let me actually walk off, the balance of their contract with us was, including stating four and five, was $352,500. There's been no change orders to that so far, and so far, we made $123,883 payments to that company. The total, we're a little under $2 million that we spent, and our finished balance is There are a couple projected things coming down the road. As you know, we have running tab with the transit. We are within their right-of-way area, so anytime we're within the right of way, we have to have flagman come out. So right now, we're at $25,689. That we projected, we have to owe them to date so far. We did have to replace one of the monitoring wells on site. That's another $12,080. And we had to add an additional concrete pier support. There wasn't one, we don't document, and there was a smaller charge for that, so. So looking down the road, we're about 40 grand in the contingency that may come up in the future. With that, I'm going to turn over to Paul and hold a little talk about what's been completed so far, and then looking for the next two weeks to see how anything constructive is going to happen with that.
Thank you, Chief. Last week, we had a progress meeting with the architect and the contractor. This is what the contractor provides us. It's an overview of the building and areas that are complete. If you could see what the chief was telling you, the front of the building here on the first floor, the slab has been poured. When we met last time, they were preparing for that, the foundation was in, we were doing plumbing work, they were waiting for some inspections. That's been complete, and the slab has been poured. The elevator shaft, which is here in yellow, is complete, up to the roof level. No elevator in yet, but the shaft is complete, as well as the stairwell here on the west side and the stairwell here in the rear of the building. They're currently working on the hose tower and stairwell, which is probably about 75% complete, should be done by early next week. And this slab in the back where the, where the storage and utility rooms are is also complete. They haven't done any of the slab work in the apparatus bays because there's going to be the underground or underfloor radiant heat that has to go in, as well as the trench drains and all, and they still have to move some heavy apparatus in there, so they don't want to have to drive on it when it's complete. And then here in the red area is the underground retention-detention basin. That was mostly complete last week, and they are backfilling. By the end of this week, that should be totally complete. Here we have some pictures to show you what I was just detailing. That is, this is the front stairwell that is on the southeast corner, southwest corner of the building. That was the first stair tower to go up. That's 100% complete, and you can see the slab here poured for the first floor. The next picture is across, looking on the north side. This is the other stair tower that's in the middle of the rear. It opens up to the bays. That's also 100% complete, and you could see the slab work has been completed as well on the other corner of the building. This is the stair tower, the hose tower that they're working on now. This was mid-last week, I think on Wednesday, we were there and took these pictures. That's probably about 40 feet higher now, and it's nearing completion. I wasn't there today to see how much is done, but... I wasn't there today to see how much is done, but they're nearing completion. That actually goes above the roof level and gives us access to the roof without having to go through a hatch. This is the front stair tower from another angle, so just looking towards Broad Street from near the train tracks. This next photo that, this is the underground retention basin that was done. There was a lot of excavation that had to be done in that area, all these pipes that go in. The way it works, it, it keeps water from overflowing our sewer system, so it retains all the water that comes off the building and off the property. And little by little, each pipe will fill up until it, it starts seeping out into the, into the sewer system so that it doesn't overwhelm it. This photo, it's just, just a little different angle. This is from the corner on Broad Street by Slano-Dwayne. It shows the slab and the, that's the elevator shaft here in the, in the front, and then two of the other stair towers that are complete. And that's the full slab. Chief was talking about our decontamination area is back here, our EMS storage, and as well as our education area right here. The last photo here is on, from the other side of the building, again on Broad Street, looking to the east. And that's showing the same thing. This is the EMS storage and our decontamination area, and on our gear storage and our gear decontamination area, as well as the, the elevator shaft and the two complete stair towers. When we have a meeting, we also get a two-week look ahead. This details what is going to be done in the next two weeks, which was this week and next week. It's, you know, details that they're going to be completing the stair tower three, continue the underground retention and detention, which is at the end of this week, you shouldn't even see it, it'll be stone up to the top. Concrete slabs in the building front and back has been completed. Commence steel erection. That says it's unconfirmed, what we found out that steel is going to be delivered on August 1st, and they're going to start hanging steel next week. So the crane will be in place, and you'll start to see some of the structure of the building. While that's going on, they'll continue the underground retention. Once the stone is in place and compacted, then they could start, finish on top of it. And they'll also pour slabs in the stair towers, because they haven't done that yet. They were waiting until the stair towers were complete. And you can see the bottom, it says commence steel erection, and that's what we're saying. Once it's delivered, they don't like to leave that on the property. So once it's delivered, it's going to be put in place and it'll start looking like a building, as opposed to just, you know, dirt and stone around. That's it on the two-week look ahead. Chief, if you want to take any questions?
Okay.
So overall, product's going very well. We're on schedule, we're having a great relationship with the builders, they're very professional, very transparent on what's going on with materials. Little bit of concerns early on, but a lot of the concerns, material deliveries have actually come, come to surface, so we're doing pretty good on that. And schedule's looking very well. Right now, we're looking, construction completion sometime in April. That looks like NASA. So far, we're, we're, you know, moving on pretty good, so. Any questions? I'll have to answer any questions from council?
Does anyone on council have any questions?
Yes, Mayor. One of the things that we had talked about as a possible concern was, even though you did the testing in advance, underground, and might be some surprises.
Yeah, so so far, knock on wood, we only have one big dig left. So everything has been excavated. One of our two concerns was the stormwater runoff retention basin, that's a very big area to excavate.
Right.
Other than some old concrete, that's been fine. We have one more big dig left where we're going to have the underground fuel tanks.
Yep.
But we're pretty confident that. A lot of our worries underground, so far, have been fine. We haven't had anything, other than some concrete, a little bit of rare earth ties, some soil, but nothing major has been unearthed. So so far, we're doing very well, as far as the unknowns of underground.
Great, thank you. Good news.
That's great news. Any other questions? Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you, Chief. It was a great update. I'm glad we're on schedule. What about New Jersey Transit? Still going okay with those guys?
They're fine, yep. You know, once things are, we worked with them, we meet with them a lot, we're good with them. So, you know, we, the contractor, the, the product manager, had a good relationship with them, we've been talking to them, communicating, so we're, we're in good shape with New Jersey Transit, so.
Right.
Okay, any other comments? But councilmember of our town?
Thank you, Council President. Is there anything you need from us?
No, we're great. Council's been great support. At some point, we will be given some tours of the site. If any council member wants to come on-site, let me know, and we can arrange that. Now's probably a good time, the next couple of weeks. But we can walk around the site, look around. Usually after 3:00 is a good time to do it, so. Council feels fit, they can just, you know, reach out to us, we'll arrange a tour.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. Chief, I think you had mentioned things were beginning to get started with the private dollars that were being considered for helping with this project. How's that going?
It's going well. The mayor has been working with a group, and the mayor could probably talk about it more. But yeah, so far, it's going very well. I can ask the mayor that you can give an update on the fundraising so far.
Sure. You know, like most fundraising kind of situations, you, you start with what's called the quiet phase, where you, you know, you talk with your major donors and, and potential major donors, which we've been doing. And we're making progress. And this fall, early fall, we will be opening it up, and we certainly need support from the public, opportunity for, you know, thanking the community, for thanking the fire department for their great work with, like we've done here at City Hall and at Tatlock Field and at many of the elementary schools, you know, pavers and things like that. So that will be coming out in the next week or so. But we're doing, we're doing well, and as always, this community is incredibly generous and supportive, and we all know that we, we thank and appreciate our, our fire department tremendously, so.
And thank you, Mayor, for all the effort with that, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, the mayor's done a great job with that. We also have two grants that we'll be voting on, applications that we'll be voting on tonight for local granting organizations.
Right, one's to investors' bank and the other's to the Summit Foundation.
Great, good.
But we've already received some, you know, funding and, you know, so we're excited.
Right. Okay, any other questions from members of council? Questions from members of the public? Okay. Come on up. Just, just on this presentation. Right, okay. Just confirming.
Hey, Chief, how are you? Delia Hamlet, Leaven Brandwood. Chief, I know we spoke at 4th of July about the firehouse and everything included. I was just wondering, what, what do you think are the biggest risks to this project right now, other than the stormwater that you kind of mentioned before?
The biggest risks?
Yes.
We're good. We had, our biggest risk before was supply chain issues. That was a real big concern.
Yep.
But our contractors did a great heads-up job. Soon as they got awarded the bid, they did a lot of proactive ordering materials. So, so far, that's really the biggest risk. And other than that, you know, the risk was underground. That was our next issue was, was underground, and that's really been a non-issue for unearthing materials. But so far, it's been, it's been great.
And then what happens if the grant isn't approved tonight for the decon, the washing machines? Is that, I mean, I know it's going to be approved, but then once it goes, from what I understand, the washing machines that you need?
That was what, yeah. So we did, when we started fundraising, we did a list of items that we wanted to fundraise for, pretty much that, with the firemen. If things are turned down, there's other funding mechanisms we can look at down the road. I mean, find that, but.
And then the gym, the gym equipment and everything, is that taken care of, or is that, I guess maybe if you could just lay out at some point?
I'm sorry.
Like the gym equipment for the firefighters and things like that, I guess maybe if you could just lay out for the public at some point, not tonight, just what else needs to be raised for the firehouse?
That's all part of what I was just saying, is the public phase of fundraising, and that will be forthcoming in the next few weeks.
Got it. I was just confused, because when I was looking at the decon, like the washing machine.
Yeah, so, so, so the decon area downstairs, that's all part of the bid spec. There were a few items that were not included in the bid, and working closely with the mayor and a couple of the, we identified items that we need to fundraise for, items that were not included in the bid spec. And those, the things that they're racked, they're fundraising for. And they included washer, turnout gear extractor, some gym equipment, things of that nature, education materials for the education room. So I think we did a pretty good job identifying everything we need to fund outside of what's included in the bid specs.
Okay, that makes sense. And then the radiant heat, where is that?
So the apparatus bay floor, the concrete slab, that's all going to have heat, heat in it. Underground heating, radiant heat, there'll be tubes underground, that'll all, pretty much the whole apparatus bay floor is one big heater, and all the heat radiates out.
What's, I'm just curious, what's the reason for that?
I'm sorry?
What's the reason for the radiant heat?
It's efficient, it's more efficient for the building, and plus, all the heat rises up, so you get upper floors of heat. It's a lot more, a lot more efficient of where to use heat, instead of using natural gas or electric.
Okay, makes sense. Thanks for answering.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions? Come on up.
It's Peter Legroy, 124, Can You Book? I have a quick question. How are the fuel tanks being installed, and what type of protection is there going to be for leaking, and what type of system are you using?
They are, they're, they're being installed, I know they're, I believe they're double-walled tanks, but they're being installed to meet New Jersey DEP requirements. So we did, we did a pretty extensive design phase underground, and there's a detector system, leak detectors in there, there's double walls for leaking. So everything meets DEP standards for having underground storage tanks.
Are they being installed in vaults, or are they just being installed in?
Yeah, they're basically, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from public? Questions from council? All right, I think we're ready to move on. Thank you very much.
Now, as far as the public, this presentation will be on the website. There are a lot of questions I was fielding. Feel free to go to website, and you can see all, everything tonight will be on the website for public viewing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Chief. Thank you, Deputy Chief Mimbbo as well. Okay, so we're now moving on. We're going to have a brief safety update from our police chief. Thank you, Chief Zagorski.
Council President, just wanted to give everybody the update with the stolen car situation that we've been experiencing here in town. For a little more than two years, motor vehicle thefts have been on the, on the rise throughout the state. Unfortunately, the city of Summit has not been impervious to this trend. The rise of car thefts in the city comes after enjoying almost 15-year or so year period where we experienced relatively, a relatively low motor vehicle theft rate, averaging just under 10 stolen cars a year, with one year only experiencing two as the low in that time period, and one year 18 being the high. The upward trend started in 2020, with 31 cars were reported stolen that year, followed by 24 reported stolen cars the following year in 2021. That trend unfortunately has spilled into this year. To date, we have 19 cars reported stolen. So the question is, what's the Summit Police Department doing about it? Which, it's a good question, and that's why I'm here pretty much to, to fill you in on what we've done over the last few months. Since being named acting police chief a little more than seven months ago, I've made combating this problem an agency-wide priority. We have, we have been and continue to aggressively address this issue, placing a high priority on increased residential patrols, both high-visibility patrols and covert patrols, along with continued data-driven operations to include but not limited to surveillances of targeted areas and specific, and specific vehicle types, and working closely with our law enforcement partners that are experiencing the same, same problems in other jurisdictions. In addition to the countless hours of routine patrol that historically that we normally do as, as your police force, our patrol officers have logged an additional 800-plus hours in preventative high-visibility patrol and surveillances in specific areas of the city. This is in addition to this routine patrol. So these are 800 hours in so-called hotspots that we are able to identify through intelligence information and, and crime statistics. In addition, the Summit Police Department formed a special detail, or, or a unit consisting of officers and detectives from bureaus outside the patrol bureau. And when officers are also that, are taking part in that unit, or officers from the patrol bureau who are, are not scheduled to work that night, but they will come in on overtime to work with this special detail. This special detail has logged over 600 hours devoted solely to combating the vehicle theft problem, basically by doing high-visibility and preventative patrols, covert undercover surveillances and decoy operations, through follow-up investigations, which often lead our detectives out of town into Essex County cities where, you know, most of these car thefts are launched from, and it's the end spot where these cars are taken to and later sold, or unfortunately sometimes also used in other crimes. Also too, a great deal of intelligent gathering has been done by our detectives. We have, since, since I've become acting chief, an aggressive public awareness campaign through Nixle social media, handing out flyers, trying to keep the public informed to what's going on, and also hoping to change their behavior, which I'll talk about in a little bit. The Summit Police Department recently, also recently assigned one of our officers to the newly-formed Tri-County Auto Theft Task Force, which is made up of officers from Essex, Morris and Union Counties. And most of the officers that are, that are detailed to this new unit are from jurisdictions like Summit that have been, experienced the same problems. This task force will conduct anti-car theft operations in targeted hotspots, including Summit and all three counties. So the, the results to date, what is, what is our efforts? What is, what have we produced? The Summit Police Department to date has arrested 12 individuals suspected of stealing cars, again, to date. These individuals, the suspects that were arrested, it's a combination of adults, juveniles, some of the people, some of the individuals that were arrested, they may have gang affiliations. Some may have extensive criminal records, moderate criminal records, and even are just new to the game. It's a mixed, mixed bag of people that we're dealing with. In addition to 12 arrests made by the Summit Police, a joint investigation between the Summit Police Department and a, and a New York State Police Agency resulted in two additional arrests of individuals suspected of stealing cars in both the New York jurisdiction and then Summit. In addition to the arrests, on at least 15 occasions, I would think even more, because I wrote this up a while ago, this, this one bullet point, on at least 15 occasions, probably more, Summit Police Departments have encountered these criminals attempting to steal cars and either, and chased them out of town, preventing the theft. Now, this is not counting the individuals that we arrested. These are ones that we interrupted the crimes or saw them case in the area, and when we tried to stop them, they would flee on us. Prior to May, we were permitted to pursue under AG guidelines for, for stolen cars or suspected stolen cars. But since then, they have loosened that up a little bit, the Attorney General's office, and they allow us to do that now. So in essence, we pushed them out of town. So, and also too, our detectives have recovered 17 of the 19 cars that had been reported stolen. With all the initiatives that we've have implemented, they have had a fairly good amount of success. At times, far surpassing, surpassing the success of other police agencies that they have had. But still, even with that, we've only modestly slowed down the rate of cars being stolen from Summit. There are other factors that, that had to be considered that, that are, you know, also like, you know, leading to the, you know, the continuation of this, you know, even though that we have put a dent in it with making the arrests and all the, all the preventative measures that we have taken. Some of them, again, we've talked about this before, it's nothing new. The bail reform, you know, has an impact of, you know, to some degree. The Attorney General's guidelines initially, you know, prohibiting vehicle pursuits of stolen vehicles had, had something to do with that. And just to be clear too, you know, I'm in favor of strict pursuit guidelines, you know, and our officers, they have to use, you know, great judgment before they even would engage in, in a vehicle pursuit, because it is a dangerous proposition. And the last two factors that I'll get into, again, a lot of it's nothing new. I stood up here back in, I believe, January, when this was, you know, really a hot topic. And, and I, you know, we asked the public to trust, trust, trust me, trust the Summit Police Department, that we would do everything we could to combat this problem, everything legally possible that we could do. And we admitted our number one priority, and as you see, we have had success in, in slowing this down.[1775.53] But as I said at that meeting, I, and if you go back, look at, look at the record, I said, "We're going to do everything we can." And even with that though, I said, it, it's not going to, you know, it's not going to put an end to this problem because the, you know, this, this problem, it's a little more widespread than in the past, in past years, we may have had a lot more stolen motor vehicles back in the bad 90s. But when we would do initiatives like this, if we had the success with the initiatives in the 90s, what we had with these initiatives that we did recently, it would put it, you know, put a, put a big dent in it. It would slow it down, you know, it would buy us some time. But there's so, but now, there's so many people, so many criminals that are involved in this, stealing cars, that, again, we need the help of the public and I'll go into that a little bit more. So basically, the two main factors in my opinion that, that are driving this, that, you know, beyond what we could do as, as the police department, or, well, first of all, Summit, what makes Summit such a great town and a beautiful town, it also, it, you know, we're, we're a city. So, you know, people want to come here and frequent here and, excuse me one second. As I indicated in previous meetings, this is a very profitable business for the, for the criminals. It's lower risk for the criminals to be involved in because the, the penalties when they're caught for stealing a vehicle, they're, they're really not that severe. So again, low risk and there's a high reward at the other end. There's a market for these luxury cars, they're getting a good turnaround. And then the other factor, again, like I said, what makes Summit such a great town to live in, there's beautiful homes, you know, with those homes, there's some, some nice cars. So there's, there's a market here. And not only is there a market here, I mean, there's nice cars in a lot of other towns too, that are not experiencing the same problem. I feel that the biggest problem here again, and it's to repeat, not to blame anybody. Nobody deserves to be a victim. Nobody's asking for this. You know, you should be able to leave your, your doors open, your cars unlocked, your keys in it. Nobody, no, nobody has a right to invade your, you know, your private property and take your, your things, but I live in reality. And people know, you know, these criminals know that, that we're an easy mark. So I'm just going to go over some statistics to, to back up this point. What I'm getting at is we have to be more diligent, vigilant rather, with, with not leaving our cars unsecured and the key fobs in the, in the vehicles. And I'm going to point out some stats from this year to prove my point. Okay, to date, like I said, 19 vehicles have been reported stolen during the first, the first seven months of 2022. All 19 of these vehicles have been unlocked with the key fobs in the vehicles. Now, that's just not, this year, I can go back to the 24 in 2021 to 31 stolen vehicles in 2020. In fact, I think in, in the January meeting, I, I had the number was 100 at that time. So you add these 19 to that, 119, out of 119 vehicles that have been stolen in Summit, you know, over the past couple of year, few years, I believe that the number was two, did not, were not considered unlocked or had the key fobs in them. One of them, we believe, was taken by a tow truck and one of them was an older vehicle that he could steal the old-fashioned way. So all the other vehicles that were stolen were unlocked vehicles and with the, with the key fobs inside them. 17 of the stolen vehicles have been recovered by our detectives and processed for forensic evidence. There have been 62, also 62 known attempts to unlawfully enter or attempt to steal cars to date. None of these attempts resulted in cars being stolen because no key fobs had been left in the, the respective vehicles. That's 62 that we know about. And these are, these aren't just like, we're not guessing at this number, these are 62 where people have witnessed it, where we have witnessed someone trying to do it. 62, and they weren't stolen because they were locked and there were no key fobs in them. Of the 62 attempts, 35 were unlocked vehicles. Items were stolen from some of the vehicles, only, only six of the vehicles of the 34 that were entered. But again, they weren't stolen because the key fob wasn't left inside. 28 of the known 62 attempts were made to lock vehicles. Okay, of the 28 known 62 were, were made to lock vehicles. There was only one incident where a suspect encountered a locked vehicle and used force to gain entry and steal items from a vehicle. And this wasn't a vehicle that is, in this particular case, it wasn't a vehicle that would be targeted by these suspects. This was a, like a maintenance-type vehicle where tools were stolen at a vehicle, but just, just the one where force was used. So in conclusion, again, I'm, I'm asking the public for help. You know, we promised and I promised you that, you know, we would do everything that we can as a police department to keep you safe and to try to take care of this problem. And, and from, you know, what I relayed to you tonight, you know, we're doing our part and we'll continue to do our part. But again, we need the public's help and I truly believe that if everybody gets on board with this and we could just lock our vehicles, not leave our key fobs in there, we could not just slow down, but eliminate this problem. Is there any questions?
Thank you, chief. Any questions from members of council?
Counselor President?
Yes. Member Vartan.
Comment and a question. First and foremost, thank you, chief. Secondly, I'm really sorry that you have to be giving this report. I'm sorry that Summit Police Officers continue to have to put themselves in harm's way over stolen vehicles. Nobody should be the victim of the crime, as you've said, but we absolutely have to recognize that we're inviting crime and we're inviting criminals to come into this city because of our behavior. And I find that to be completely unacceptable. We have to do our part to help you. So one quick question. You spoke about an increase in auto thefts over the last couple of years. Can you speak very briefly to trends in other types of crime? Are we seeing an increase or a decrease in other categories of crime in that same timeframe?
No, it's, you know, and I forgot to conclude, I want to conclude with this before I answer that question. Summit has always been, and I believe will continue to be, one of the safest cities in, in the country, in the state of New Jersey and in Union County. But we do have this problem right now with the car thefts, in spite of that. But I just want to, you know, to, you know, reassure the public that again, this is one of the safest, you know, places. I would recommend this town to anybody that I cared about, any family member that wanted to move here, any close friend that wanted to move here. I would recommend them to move here, shop here, do whatever here. It's a safe community. But we're not, again, we're not, you know, immune from occasional crimes. And, and not to downplay the stolen cars, this is a problem. I'm sorry, I got off in a little tangent and I got a...
Other, other types of crime, are we seeing an increase like we're seeing an increase in auto thefts? Or are we seeing a decrease in other types of crime?
For the most part, it's been, it's been staying the same. There had been some decreases in, in certain areas.
Sure.
I can go over some of them real quick. Historically, burglaries have been, you know, on a, on a downward, on a downward trend, residential burglaries. I don't think that, and this year, I believe we have, only have seven to date. The last, like, you know, four or five years, the, the numbers have been under 20. And this is in contrast, I've been doing this a long time, talk about the 90s when they, we would have 175 residential burglaries, over 200 residential burglaries, that, that it's almost like a non-existent crime now. Violent crime has always been low in, in, in town. They maybe, you might, you might see a couple of blips, like, you know, for the most part, when I say violent crime, I mean rape, robbery, murder, arson. Historically, we probably only average, you know, under 10 a year. And we may have, you know, an anomaly like in 2020, we had like five or six more violent crimes than a previous year and then the other year, well, it's a succeeding year. But that was due to, we had an investigation of a serial pedophile from back in like 20 years ago, that we were retroactively going back and, and making, and charging.
Sure.
So that affected it, but that number has always, you know, has always been low. Overall crime, again, it's always below the, the national averages, always below the state average, always below the county average. But again, we're, we're not immune, but...
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Are there any other questions from Councilmember Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, chief. Great report. I agree with you. I believe we live in one of the safest communities anywhere in this country, in this, in the whole world, for that matter. And I've lived all over the world, so I know, we live in a very safe community and, and we have a great police force. So I just want to say, I just, a couple of comments, and this was from Chief Bartolotti when he met with us about the same report. He said, "There are three elements to crime: desire, target, and opportunity." Would you agree with that, those three elements? And if you remove opportunity, you can eliminate the crime?
Especially in this particular case, I often, when I'm given these reports, when you're talking about trying to prevent crimes, crime prevention, you're using techniques to slow things down or just, you know, slow the rate down. In this particular case, though, we're not talking about slowing it down, we're talking about eliminating it. And in, in my line of work, I can't stand up and say that there's anything that we could actually almost eliminate, but this one, I could confidently say we could eliminate the problem if we don't leave the opportunity by leaving the cars unlocked and the key fobs in the cars. These cars can't be stolen any other way. Okay? Now, there's, there's always talk about, what about the high-tech things I hear about? You know, that's a possibility, but you know, right now, that's not, that's not happening.
You're not seeing that? And then the other thing is, of the 62 attempted thefts that were caught on video, I'm sure there were many more attempted thefts. What did the criminals do after they were unsuccessful?
On every one of them, they tried the door handle and they moved on to the next.
And they move on.
And that's why, again, like, by taking these, preventing these, these measures by locking the car, the goal is, you know, the goal is to incarcerate so they can't do it again. But, you know, I'm showing you that we are doing that, but it's continuing. So the, the goal is pretty much push it out of town.
And of the guys arrested or women, I don't know who's been arrested.
No women.
But the people that have been arrested, have they had weapons, guns, anything like that?
On these, no.
They're not armed?
No.
They're just, they're just trying to unlock a car, just find an unlocked car.
But yeah, but like I said, it's a mixed bag of suspects. We've been fortunate, none of them have been armed. We have been fortunate that, that no one's gotten hurt. Now, we've had incidents, none of our officers got hurt, but during pursuits on two, three occasions, we were rammed by a suspect vehicle, but most importantly, no, no citizens have been hurt. But like I've said, oh, 100 times, that should, you know, make, you know, reassure people, make them feel a little bit safer, but that doesn't mean that that can't happen. If these people are cornered, you know, based on a lot of their backgrounds and their records, if they're confronted or, or, you know, cornered, it, it could be, it could be a dangerous situation.
Yeah.
But luckily today, no.
And then what about the time of day? Is this a nighttime thing or is this, could this be broad daylight?
No, this has become no rhyme or reason. I mean, we could show a majority of them happening at night, but, you know, the, the trend started where they were taking it into the rush hour, into the, into the early morning hours. Now, it's, it's whenever they feel like it.
Yeah. And then just one final comment was, I have, we have a new puppy, so I'm walking all times at day and night. And I have seen your patrols come down my street after midnight and it's one of those things where I'm happy to see the car going by, but as soon as the police leave the neighborhood, this is a very quick crime. They could walk into my neighbor's driveway and test that door and they could be gone. And that patrol, while it's effective for the time he's on the street.
Sure.
Right? It's a very frustrating crime to control without the public's participation, without the public's help.
No, without question. And, you know, talking about like what you had just mentioned and that I had said that Summit is one of the safest communities and, and it's just a beautiful city, that's part of what's causing the problem because when you live in a town like this, it, I, it's easy to get complacent. And I think that's what we're dealing with, you know, with the, with the public. And, you know, we're, we're trying to do the, the public relations campaign with the media and the Nixle. And believe me, you know, I, I know, I see some of the comments, this is in no way meant to, to shame anybody. We just, the, the, the whole goal of this is to show that if a car's unlocking the key fobs in it, it's getting stolen. When it's not locked, when it was locked, it's not getting stolen. And I want to keep on, excuse me, hammering that home.
And one, and one final thought, because this is, a lot of it is crime of opportunity, but my son, he'll take his bike to town and I say, "You better lock that bike." Because bikes are gone so fast too. But if they're locked, I tell him, "They're locked. If somebody's determined, they'll break your lock." But it's going to take them too long and they'll move on, just like with the key fobs, they'll move on. So if he goes to town, I make sure he has his lock with him as well.
And to your, to your example, it's what I'm talking about. I don't even want to use that as any kind of parallel between the cars that are getting stolen. That's the perfect example that what I'm talking about. There's measures you could take with your bicycle, like to lock it, but if that person wants the car, they're going to, you know, cut the lock, you know, it's going to take a little bit longer, but they're going to, they're going to bypass it with, with what's going on right now. If you lock your car and don't have the key fob in, it's not getting stolen.
Right.
Right now.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Any other comments? Councilmember Harrison?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Chief, if you could talk about, I think it may have been when Chief Bartolotti was here and Councilman Vartan, I'm going to get the name of the company wrong, but the chief bought in a, an organization to help with mental health issues that the police and the EMS were dealing with.
It's Brideway.
Brideway.
Brideway. Is that partnership, is that still going well? What's, what's your take on that?
Yeah, that, that is still going and, and it's a good program. But for the most part, a, a lot of these are handled by the first responding officer. And, you know, again, luckily, we've had situations that, that were pretty dicey and could, it could have went sideways, but because of our officers' training that they've received and they've received extensive training, on top of whatever's required, we're always going to go more. And these incidents have been resolved without anybody getting hurt and, and, and the person getting the help that they need.
Officer, are you, are you, are the officers seeing an uptick in mental health-type calls?
Yeah, that's been on the rise for, for going on 10, 12 years now. You know, it's sad, but yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions from the public? Okay. Thank you so much, chief.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, so we're now on to, oh, oh, sorry, Councilmember Little.
She was just saying thank you.
Oh, that was just a thank you, okay. All right, so we're now moving on to public comments. So at this point in the meeting, we will take comments from the public about any issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. And whenever you have, whenever you read from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the city clerk and you can email her at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org or you can just hand her your paper. And please come up and state your name and, and address and please try to stick to three minutes. Come on up, Mr. Bennett. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Jim Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T, 38 Fairview Avenue. The request that I'm about to make may seem moot, but it really is not. I understand that I stood at the June 15th, 2022 council meeting that Dr. Powell would send us his and Mr. Redding's fiscal impact report on Broad Street West. Dr. Powell chose the methodology that had the least fiscal impact on the city, but without the report, we cannot evaluate his choice should we decide to spend the money to have Dr. Powell's report independently reviewed. It appears that L&amp;M Toll Brothers will present a proposal for a smaller building, which we welcome, but the fiscal impact of the building on the city remains relevant. Dr. Powell would likely use the same methodology to evaluate the impact that he used on the larger building. When I solved high school math problems, the teacher always asked me to show my work. Just getting the right result would not get me any credit, rightly so. We're asking Dr. Powell to do nothing more than what I did at high school, show his and Mr. Redding's work. He has it. Producing it shouldn't be any problem. And I've been following up informally with the city clerk to find out if the report has arrived, and so far, it's a no-show. So, Madam Council President, could I please call on you to follow up with Dr. Powell?
I'm going to refer that to our city administrator. Whether we expect, do we expect a report, or, I mean, it is somewhat moot, and we would update it, I would believe.
So, as a result of what we did about a month ago with that particular project and analysis, I put a financial advisor on hold to doing anything, completing anything, until we had some clarity about how we were moving forward. Yes, your point about it being moot is correct. I understand that he talked about producing it at that time we were moving forward, but I'd put everything on hold because of what we did, the council decided to do a month I think for just finalizing a product, I think that that's what we want to eventually do with that particular project we were discussing, which we are not, no longer doing. But at this point, I put a hold on those, that professional to finalize it because of just not incurring any fees with regard to that particular completion of his report. I have to follow up with him, but I have not had any further discussions over the last few weeks with finalization. So that's why there's no report to be put.
Well, if you do have the occasion to follow up with him, and if he hasn't, would it be in order to ask for it?
If it's a, if it's a finalized report, which it isn't, until it's finalized, but I'm not authorizing him to do any work at this point, so it's just one of those business things I have to deal with. So I just appreciate your patience on that.
Mr. Bennett, there is, we're not going to incur costs on, you know, to do a report for something that's not a project, that's, you know, that's currently being contemplated. You know, it's, there will be a report when there is a project that, you know, once we settle on a project, there'll be an opportunity to go over it.
Okay. Yeah, I hope it would be early on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments?
It's Peter Lejoy, L-I-J-O-Y, at 124 Canoe Brook Parkway. I'm going to leave a copy, or a series of copies, so the clerk can share them with the council. It's come to my attention that the firm of Cleary Giacobi Alfieri Jacobs has been representing Toll Brothers in Manalapan. And I have a question, well, I have a few questions. Number one, is the council aware of that? Number two, who is the, who is the ethics officer for the city? Number three, is this a violation of the state municipal local government ethics law? Because I don't see how we have counsel whose firm represents Toll Brothers in another community, who can sit in closed sessions and be involved in matters concerning Broad Street West and Toll Brothers, and have a division of interest. And I think this needs to be addressed by the council. And I think the public deserves an answer. Because clearly, Mr. Giacobi's firm is benefiting from Toll Brothers' payments in Manalapan. And I don't understand how you can avoid, how there can be an avoidance of conflict of interest. And in my life, both in public and private, I've always been, I've taken a lot of courses on this. And I think the more of this that I see between L&amp;M and their nonsense in New York City, and Toll Brothers using a firm that sits, who's, one of their attorneys sits at this dais, supposedly representing us independently, the more this project becomes tainted. And I see a private project being developed at the corner of Morris Avenue and River Road with no rab bonds, no pilots. We're still getting 50% affordable houses. And I see no reason why the city's involved in this at all. This should be a private sector engagement. And this whole business across the state, not just Summit, is just a little too cozy, you know? And then I look at Topology's website, and they have Summit Projects, and they name Summit council people, they name Summit elected officials, they name Summit staff on their private business. Again, I just think it is too cozy. I don't think Summit needs to be in this business. If a private entity can come in and develop a project with 54-some-odd units and deliver 15% affordables, we don't need local government involved in this. Our city government has enough to do to take care of the residents' needs without being in the building and development business. And as far as putting everything on hold, I believe we're still doing environmental testing on the parking lot behind that post office, correct? That hasn't been put on hold, has it?
No.
Okay. And how is the parking garage going to be paid?
Excuse me, Mr. Lejoy. Mr. Lejoy, no, you speak to me. You don't speak to anyone else on the dais.
Fine. I'm sorry, Council President. And I, the only other question I have is, if we do have a parking garage, which I think is out of size and out of place there, are we going to end up paying for that with rab bonds, again, being subsidized with taxpayer bond? So those are my questions. But my big question is, how are we addressing this potential? I'm not making any accusations, but how are we addressing this potential conflict that I think exists between Toll Brothers and the city solicitor? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lejoy. Okay, are there any other comments from members of the public?
Would you like me to address it?
Sure, if you'd like to.
Let this gentleman go.
Okay. Okay.
Steve Sartorius, 37 Tulip Street. Just a quick question. There's been discussion about a citizens advisory group. You brought it up the last time. I'm just wondering, has there been any progress on that? Any idea how that's going to work? How is it going to interface with the steering committee? Will it have any meaningful say on how this project goes forward?
I think City Administrator Rogers has answered what we are prepared to say at this point about, about how we're going to do the public outreach. We'll get back to you as soon as.
There were no, I mean, everything, it's always, if this, if we're going forward in September.
No, we are going forward when we are going forward. It's not necessarily in September. We will be, as soon as we have answers, we will come out to the public and tell you how it's going to work. We're still, we're still working on that.
Okay, I think the concern.
And everything that City Administrator Rogers said is all we can say at this point.
Okay. I just think the concern is that this is going to be a rubber stamp group, they're going to be presented as something.
That is not the intent.
Okay, that's fine. We'll see. Thank you.
We have been listening to you, to the members of the community, and we do intend to, to make this a meaningful interaction, a meaningful process.
Endeavor. Yes, I was just looking for the word, yes.
Well, I'm just, you know, again.
And may I just say that we, that we, what we heard loud and clear, very forcefully and importantly, was that the community didn't want us to be making decisions about anything, the process, the project, anything, in the summer. So we're working internally, we're thinking, we're planning. We have not made decisions, we're not going to make decisions in August. As soon as we make decisions, maybe in September, I do not know, we will let you know. We are, it is incredibly important to us to make sure we do this directly and openly in as, in as an efficient manner as possible.
Okay, no, that would be great. I mean, it's just, I think many members of the public are a little skeptical of this, given, you know, the history, right? This was presented to us in February of '09. There were immediately, it was a backlash.
You know what, we're not going to, we're not engaging in this.
I'm hoping the public's not, is not skeptical of us. We're trying.
Well, I hope so. It would be interesting to see what the presentation comes back.
Okay. Mr. Giacobi, did you want to respond?
Yes. This gentleman made some fairly serious accusations. It's on the record, he tried to back off at the end, saying, "I'm not alleging anything," but he did allege something.
Yep.
One should read Supreme Court guidance. The New Jersey Supreme Court guidance has given guidance on this very point. First and foremost, I have never met with Toll Brothers in this community. I have not negotiated any of the deals with them. I don't even know who they are. When the gentleman were sitting here that one night, I don't know who, if they're L&amp;M or Toll Brothers. So people should know that the city council selected another attorney to represent the city in those negotiations. I'm not party to that. I'm here at the dais giving guidance on Open Public Meeting Act, interaction with the public, et cetera. Second, the New Jersey Supreme Court has ruled that you are not barred to be a municipal attorney and represent a developer in another community in a completely separate matter. I personally have never represented any developer or builder. I'm a labor attorney. I represent municipalities, school boards, as a public attorney, representing them in public interests. I've never, I don't even, I've never been before a planning board in my entire life. I've never been before a zoning board in my entire life. So for you to come up and make accusations that somehow I'm being unethical, that's far from the truth. I'm very cognizant of what my ethical responsibilities are as an attorney. I value those very closely. And frankly, the accusation that because one of my partners represents a developer in a county that's four counties away, that has no merit here whatsoever. And the Supreme Court has ruled very clearly, in fact, if you're a labor attorney in a town, you can represent a developer in that very town before a zoning board and a planning board. That's what the New Jersey Supreme Court's ruled. I'm not representing a developer before this council. I'm not representing a developer before a zoning board or a planning board, nor have we ever. We represent the city and the city's interests only in this town. And again, the specific negotiations are being handled by a separate lawyer, a separate law firm, and I'm not even consulted on it. I have not, I have, I've had zero interaction with the attorney who's handling those negotiations, and I've had zero meetings with any of the developers regarding this project. I have seen the developers as much as you have when they sit, when they're sitting here in this room. That's it. So I think that should address the accusations, and I hope that that allays Mr. Lejoy's concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Giacobi. Okay, are there any other comments from members of the public? Good evening.
Good evening. Miriam Sanz, 65 Woodland. I was just listening to what Mr. Sartorius said in their responses, and it kind of made me think about, you know, you're, you're having meetings over the summer, clearly discussing Broad Street West, and while no decisions are being made, it's a black hole for the public. And the public doesn't know when you're going to announce, you know, we're inviting people to, you know, ask to be on the public committee, right? If there's, if there is a public advisory committee. So I'm wondering about notice. How will the public be notified of the next steps for Broad Street West? When, is there going to be a mailer, like the recycling and all the other things? I mean, Mayor and I talked about this. I think there was supposed to be a mailer out sometime in July. I didn't get anything. Well, when we discussed it.
Nothing came out because so many things changed.
Right. But I think that, I think that the public needs to know about the, all of this, including how they can be involved besides coming to council meetings. I mean, there are probably a lot of people who might be interested in being on a public committee. It doesn't mean there's room for everybody, but you have to be able to know who's interested. And the people who are away all summer have no idea, right? And September will come, and, you know, maybe the opportunity we've missed. But I do think the public needs to be notified by mail of the next steps, whatever they are. The next meetings, all of it, not just Facebook and, you know, other means, because a lot of people aren't on Facebook.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any other comments? So, and we had no letters, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so public comment, very disclosed. And we'll move on to ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, could you read the first ordinance, please?
Yes. ID number 9735, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-10, One-Way Streets of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Okay. Councilmember Little? I think you're, you need to unmute. We still can't hear you.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, perfect.
Okay. Sorry about that. This ordinance is to declare Cobalt Road as a one-way street. This is the direction of the engineering department. Upon receiving requests from residents, the engineering and traffic division studied this road and found that it would be appropriate for a one-way street because of the width of the road and the difficulty that people, residents on the street have when there are delivery trucks or landscaping trucks on the road. All the residents were notified. All the residents who responded were in favor. They were given a second opportunity to respond, and to express their reservations, and no one responded. So at this point, I would like to introduce this ordinance. I believe the hearing will be at the next council meeting.
I'll second that. And yes, the hearing date will be September 6, which is the next council meeting. So with that, could we have a roll call, please? Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Clacks? Aye. Okay, moving on to the second safety and health ordinance. Could you please read the title, Madam Clerk?
ID number 9772, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-11.2, Stop Intersections Designated of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Little?
Thank you. Council President, this ordinance is to install a four-way stop at the intersection of Canoe Brook Parkway and Hartley Road. This is being done at the joint coordination of the engineering department and the Summit Police Traffic Bureau to install this four-way stop sign in order to reduce motor vehicle accidents and enhance pedestrian safety. It has met all the requirements for a four-way stop sign, and at this point, I would like to introduce this ordinance for hearing, I believe, also on September 6.
And I'll second it. And could we please have a roll call? Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Clacks? Aye. Okay, moving on to resolutions. We have one finance resolution. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution number 9791. It follows the approval of the bond ordinance at our last meeting. That ordinance approved financing for Summit's portion of Phase 3 of the joint meeting's flood mitigation project. This resolution confirms the form and other details of the notes that will go through the Water Bank Construction Financing Program of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank. As a reminder, the amount to be issued is up to $3,595,000, of which we expect 90% to be reimbursed by FEMA. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. We're going to call for a roll call vote, just to be safe on this one. Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Clacks? Aye. Okay, the resolution carries. And we'll move on to law and labor. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. Introducing Resolution ID number 9762, to renew the 2022-2023 liquor license for the meat house, New Jersey Summit LLC. This is a annual renewal that some residents may remember. We renewed several liquor licenses, and this particular one had to go through some other matters to get theirs applied for, and everything was done in decency and order. And they paid a fee of $1,980 and are now ready to have their liquor license renewed. So I ask for approval of this resolution.
May I second?
Are there any comments from members of council? Okay, comments from public? Okay, comments from public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So go on with the law and labor number two, please. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. Introducing Resolution ID number 9782, to extend sick leave with pay for an employee in the Department of Community Services, the Division of Public Works on the Fleet Maintenance Unit. And according to our policies and procedures, everything is within order for this employee to have their sick leave extended, and we wish them good health.
Do you want to move the motion?
So I move for this motion to be approved.
My second.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're now moving on to community programs and parking services. Councilmember Miniger, would you like to do the first one?
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9767, and this resolution authorizes the Department of Community Programs, on behalf of the city, to submit a grant application for a $100,000 matching grant on the Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund. If awarded, these funds will be used for enhancing Maybe Park, including two basketball courts, a new playground equipment. That playground equipment is both ADA compliant and sensory friendly for kids with special needs. I move that we adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Councilman. This is a great grant. We recently upgraded our basketball courts at Tatlock and at Memorial with this grant money and city money as well, and they just are fantastic. And I want to congratulate Mark. It's been a while since you've been here, but I just want to congratulate you and your team because the courts are fantastic, and you can just tell by the amount of kids that are out there playing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan. Does anyone else? Councilmember Vartan?
Very quickly, Council President, there are times up here when I try to seem older, times up here when I try to seem younger. This is one of the times when I'm going to try to seem older because the park at Maybe has been the same since I've been playing on it, which is too long. And the most fun part of it, which was the wooden train, is gone, and I'm looking forward to supporting this grant application, and I hope that we can move forward and get some new cool stuff there so the kids can play on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So $100,000 grant, how much does the whole project cost, probably?
Can't be more than 50% of that grant, so I can get the exact-
Okay. No, I don't need the exact number. I was just curious. So 150, all in, you think?
It's a matching. It's an equal match, isn't it?
I'm just thinking ahead, like fundraising opportunities. Mark, sorry.
Come on up.
What other city project am I going to be asked to find money for?
This one.
I think it's more.
This is the entire Maybe.
For you, Council President, we're not at that point where we have a dollar figure for Maybe, but this grant, it's matching, so it's 100. We're hoping for $100,000.
So you probably need three or four all in.
All in, we're going to need close to a million dollars.
A million? Okay, good, all right. I have time.
Yeah, and, you know, in previous discussions, we're looking to do something similar to the playground that Westfield put in, and that was put in three years ago, and it was $850,000.
Understood. Okay, thank you. I haven't really been part of any of this discussion, so I'm just-
You're welcome.
And we have basketball courts as well, so-
Basketball courts are part of it as well.
And that's about, when we did Memorial, that was about 50?
Memorial was 100. Tatlock was 52, 53.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from members of council? Questions from the public? Okay. Okay, come on up.
Hi, Delia Hamlet, 11 Brentwood. Council President Fox, I was just wondering, how long do we anticipate that project taking as far as getting it approved for Maybe, Maybe Playground?
I think that's a question for the director to answer. Would you mind coming up and answering? Wait, no, we need you on the microphone, sorry. You can choose another microphone.
Just to give you an update as to where we stand with the Playground Master Plan, we hired an engineering consultant back in April. We had our first meeting with them towards the end of March. It was just our kickoff meeting. Aaron Schreger and I actually met with them today, which was our second meeting. So it's progressing. We are hoping to have dollar figures as well as potential apparatuses and structures at all of our playgrounds. You know, timeframe, I'm definitely by the end of the year.
By the end of the year, for what? What will we have at the end of the year?
We're hoping to have our master plan completed.
Yeah, not the project.
Not the project.
Not the projects, no.
We have to still get, then we still have to fund the project.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. I think that brings me to Councilman Vartan's point as far as him feeling old because he's been looking at these basketball courts for the same amount of time, and I think Danny and I talked about this briefly a few weeks ago, was can we just donate some nets and put them up in the meantime? Because I was actually watching people shoot around today at Maybe, and there's half-wire nets in each basketball net, and I just think it would be a really easy fix temporarily until we got the approval, which would take, probably a year and a half, two years. I think that it's much needed, and I know we have some pretty tall people. We can probably get some ladders, and just a thought. But I was watching it today because I was at the nail salon across the street, and I think it would be just a good idea, so it's just a thought. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So are there any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and we'll move on to community programs number two.
Thank you, Council President. This one is number 9771, and this resolution authorizes the purchase of a new Showmobile in the amount of $228,260. The Showmobile is the mobile stage where we have all watched many performances on the green during community events. The current mobile stage is in need of replacement, and it's been in use for performances for nearly 30 years. The new Showmobile, watch how many times I say Showmobile, by the way, this- has been, and will be purchased through a national cooperative purchase agreement, and includes new lights, an automatic stage leveling system, stage extensions, very, very solid aluminum stairs, which is important to anyone that's walked up that, and a wheelchair lift that makes the stage accessible for people who need assistance. And I move that we adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to add to the excellent description from Councilmember Miniger. If you've ever been on the Showmobile, you're lucky to have made it off, and I think you'll certainly understand the need for a new one. But kidding aside, the Showmobile is used dozens of times a year for events, all of which do the wonderful work of bringing people together and to create and maintain a wonderful sense of community here. So I'm happy to support the work of our Department of Community Programs and this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Does anyone else have any comments?
I'm really, really grateful that you're going to have a new Showmobile. I can stand up there and know that I'm going to talk to 100, 200, 300, 400 people, and that doesn't scare me, but coming up and down those stairs does. And I think all I need, I'm going to fall, and everyone's going to laugh. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, I had a question. Will this also affect, will there also be, is part of this a sound system, or is that separate?
Lights, I don't know if sound is included.
Sound is not included, but separate. Okay, thank you. All right. So are there any other questions? Comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're moving on to capital projects and community services. Councilmember O'Sullivan, would you like to take the first one, please?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9744, to approve a monopole lease co-location agreement between Dish Wireless LLC and Verizon Wireless. Verizon Wireless leases a portion of three Constantine Place from the city where they constructed a communications monopole in 2014. Currently, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile have a contract to have their communications equipment installed on the pole. Dish Wireless would like to enter into a similar agreement to add their equipment to the pole and become the third co-locator. Dish will pay monthly rent of $2,500 for a total of $30,000 annually. Dish Wireless must submit their designs for approval to the city engineer if their co-locator status is approved tonight. Dish will also have to separately submit construction plans and obtain building permits from the city. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to capital projects number two. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9671, to amend professional services agreement, 2022 Legal Services, redevelopment attorney, additional fees $211,000. At the beginning of the year, the city entered into an agreement with Marzidi Falcone LLP for a not-to-exceed fee of $75,000 for legal services related to Broad Street West redevelopment. That amount was based on prior year's workload, but after a very busy first half of the year, it has become necessary to amend the contract to a new not-to-exceed fee of $286,000. The scope of the work remains the same, and that is to provide legal counsel and advice during the ongoing phases of Broad Street West. Just a reminder, all costs associated with this contract will be reimbursed by the developer through the escrow account that has already been established. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're now moving on to capital projects number three. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9754, to authorize execution and submission of grant application, 2022 Greening Union County Grant Application. This resolution will authorize the submission of the 2022 Greening Union County Grant Application for the 2023 planting season. This is a matching grant with Union County in the amount of $20,000 for a total of $40,000. This grant will go towards the supply and planting of 100 trees in the 2023 planting cycle. Our city forester, John Lenson, is proposing to plant 10 various tree species, of which my favorite is the Crimson King Norway Maple. This grant has provided great value and will enable the city to exceed its four-year goal of 1,000 trees planted. I move this resolution.
My second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so moving on to the last capital projects and community services resolution.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9778, to declare a vacancy, Department of Community Services, UCC Division, part-time plumbing and mechanical subcode official inspector. As we discussed in the closed session, there's a need to declare a vacancy for a part-time subcode official inspector, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
My second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're now moving on to safety and health. Councilmember Little, would you like to take the first resolution?
Thank you, Council President. With your permission, I would like to bundle the first three resolutions.
Sure.
So the Resolution number 9766 is to authorize grant submissions, grant applications, submission of grant applications to the New Jersey DCA American Rescue Plan in the amount of $33,567.40 for a washer extractor to clean GTE. Resolution number 9794 is to authorize grant application submissions of $50,000 to investors for money to support the Summit Fire Headquarters Project. It has the Investors Foundation. And Resolution number 9793 is to authorize grant application submissions to the Summit Foundation to also, in the amount of $50,000, to support the Sunski Summit Fire Headquarters Project. As we heard, the update on the firehouse project earlier from Chief Feathers is moving forward a little, and this is part of the ongoing fundraising to support items that are needed for the building and aren't necessarily capital expenditures. And the mayor has been doing a great job in reaching out to different foundations. Millennium has been supporting us with finding grant application possibilities, and these three grant application submissions are really well thought out and needed, and I ask that we approve these three resolutions.
Okay, yeah, I need a second. Oh, I'm seconding, right. Sorry, I forgot that. Okay, so I second it. Okay. So are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Yes, come on up, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just to point out, Resolution 9766, if rewarded, this grant, it would be offsetting costs for that equipment for the fire. These two items were included in the bid spec, so if you do get this grant, it'll be an offsetting cost opportunity for the city.
Okay, great, thank you. So with that, if there are no other comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then we have one last safety and health, or we actually have two.
Yes, two more. But the fourth Resolution is number 9775, which is to declare vacancies in the police department for the positions of lieutenant, sergeant, and officer. This is due to the impending retirement of Lieutenant David Ritzel, who's been with the department for a long period of time and served the city very, very well. And we are sad to see him go, but wish him the best in his retirement, which after he uses his terminal sick and vacation time will end on September 1st of this year. So we are declaring these three positions because if they'll have position of lieutenant, we will promote someone from sergeant, and then we'll need to fill the police officer position as well. So I ask that we approve this resolution for the declaration of these vacancies.
And I second it. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have one more item. Councilmember Little, would you like to take this one?
Thank you. This is an added resolution, which is safety and health number five, which is to confirm the appointment of the chief of police. As we all know, Chief Zagorsky was appointed the acting chief of the police department on December 18, 2021. He has done an exemplary job in this position and is agreed to stay on for, you know, extended periods of time, and we are very happy to have him because he's been doing a wonderful job for the city. So at this time, the mayor has advised that she would like to appoint him as the actual chief of police instead of acting chief, and as chair of safety, I am in full agreement with this and enthusiastically support that decision. So at this time, I would ask that council approve this resolution to confirm Chief Zagorsky's appointment as the chief of police of Summit.
And I enthusiastically second that. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from the public?
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wait, 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 we got to vote. We got to vote.
Can I say something else?
Yes.
Thank you, Council President.
It's the congratulations after we vote, though.
Yeah. I'm pleased to have, as a member of the squad, weekly interactions with members of the police department. of the police department. In my conversations with them, it's very clear that Chief Zagorski has the deep respect of his colleagues, and as a council member, it's clear that he's deeply committed to this community and to the principles associated with policing at the highest level. So I'm glad that we're taking this step, and I'm happy to support it, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And so with that, all those in favor?
I just want to say, I am so pleased that council, enthusiastically to a person, when I suggested this is what I would like to do, without a second thought, all said, yep, absolutely, mayor, we are thrilled and very happy. And I want to thank you. You stepped into a tough spot in the beginning, and you've done, it's a pleasure working with you, and I am very grateful for your service.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Congratulations. Oh, Chief, we have to embarrass you a little bit.
I know this is not your style, I get it, but we just can't help ourselves.
We appreciate everything you've done for the city, and we look forward to continuing to work with you now as the actual chief. So thank you. Okay, so with that, we're moving on to, it's a little anticlimactic, the consent agenda.
Always.
Always, yeah, okay. So unless anyone has anything they'd like to pull out of this, we'll take the items as a whole. And do I have a motion?
Oh, wait, do you have, just please, advise that Number Six has been pulled.
Oh, okay, I didn't get that far. Wait, it doesn't say that on mine.
Oh, okay, but it is pulled. Which one is that? It was redemption from Texas or something.
Okay, and that's, okay, so that's.
It's not even on there, so I don't even know that.
Oh, okay, all right. So with that, all those, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And so now on to council members' comments and new business. Anyone have anything they'd like? Councilmember Vartan?
Is that surprising, Council President?
Three items?
No, just one.
Okay.
So in the past, and maybe since the beginning of this year, other council members here on the dais have been largely quiet about Broad Street West while we try to figure things out. It's important, I think, though, for individual council members to speak up on this. So I'll tell you what's important to me as related to Broad Street West. So first, redevelopment is absolutely necessary because of the master plan, because the financial opportunities associated with it, and because of our need to construct affordable housing. The second thing is, we have, that we have to have a very clearly defined process for what will happen next. And third, that we then communicate to the community what the plan says and where we are in the process, transparently and clearly, and in lots of different formats. I feel really confident from our discussions that we're headed in that direction. I will also add that I feel strongly that from every member of this community, this is going to require patience, compromise, and that we treat each other with respect. Those are the things that are important to me about Broad Street West. I don't want to put anybody else on the spot, but that's, I'll start with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Does anyone else have anything they want to say at this point?
Yes.
Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I want to just bring up that I just traveled back from Florida, and I am noticing the increase in COVID deaths in certain areas, and I'm so grateful that we're not experiencing that here in New Jersey, and just would like to ask the mayor. I know there is, or there was, you know, a task force with the Overlook who was paying attention to rates, and that they would, you know, contact you and our Safety and Health Committee, and let us know if there was anything that needed to be paid attention to, because we did such an amazing job stemming the tide in town. And I just wanted to get your thoughts about how, have you heard anything? Is there anything we need to be concerned as a community?
Right. The quick answer is no. I haven't heard anything. We didn't really have what I would call a task force, it was never titled that, but.
Sorry.
No, no worries. I just want to make, I have, I don't want to be, you know, say we had a task force, and then someone will say, well, who was on the task force? Well, there was no task force. But we had a, when it was the heat of COVID, the height of COVID, excuse me, we had a weekly conversation with the Overlook Hospital, a couple of staff members, the, you know, the president, CEO, and a couple of other people. And then, over time, so we keep each other apprised, what we were learning, what we were, the Health Department was telling us, what we were finding in the schools, and then what Overlook was experiencing. Then it became, the meetings, the conversations became less frequent as this, you know, as everything kind of wound down. The last time we had a conversation was about a month ago, and we agreed that if things changed, if they saw anything in their, in the hospital setting that they felt we should know about, they would, he, she would reach out to me, this is the current CEO of the hospital, and vice versa, if I saw something, or if Megan Avalon, who's our Health Department official, if she advised me of anything, then I would reach out to them. So that's where we are. We have a really clear line of communication. If anything comes up on either side, we will be in touch. And I have to say, throughout the entire process with COVID, and I'm sure you got, you can, you know, back me up on this, that Overlook has been incredibly responsive. It's no issue. So I, you know, I have, I have no need to call them at this point. If I hear of anything, I will, and I am confident that if they think I should be advised of something to help our community, they'll reach out.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. So we'll be back September 6th, so enjoy August, everyone.